On that, anybody need another one of these? I've got so many of them.
So did something change?
I have to call it to order and thank everybody for coming. And we'll go to item number two, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody could stand up and remove your hats. Appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda, we'll go to number three, a motion to approve the approval of the Planning Commission agenda tonight.
So move to approve.
Well, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. We'll move on to item number five, approval of the 9623 192nd Avenue Northeast pole safety cover variance request, public hearing minutes on July 17, 2019.
So move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. We'll move on to item number eight, motion approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes on July 17, 2019.
So move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. We'll go on to item number six, a motion approval of 7162 and 7222 167th Avenue Northeast, John Arnt excavation IUP and variance request for aquaculture fish pond, public hearing minutes on July 17, 2019.
So move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. We'll go on to item number seven, a motion approval of Chapter Eight subdivision road specification ordinance amendment, public hearing minutes on July 17, 2019.
So move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. We'll move on to item number eight, motion approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes on July 17, 2019.
So move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. We'll move on to item number eight, motion approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes on July 17, 2019.
So move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. We'll go on to item number nine, public hearing and discussion. Now, we're going to have a public hearing and discussion for the Rabine Estates preliminary plat and conditional use permit, CUP, rural residential plan unit development, a PUD request, pages one through 21, and enclosure. And at this time, I would like to ask the recording secretary to read the notice as published.
City of Columbus, public hearing notice preliminary plat. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the City of Columbus Planning Commission on Wednesday, August 7, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as parties may be heard in the City Hall located at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus, Minnesota, to consider a request for preliminary plat Rabine Estates creating two new lots in the rural residential zoning districts. The hearing shall continue until all evidence and testimony has been received. The applicant is Woodset Smith Milting, Sean, I'm sorry, Koopcho?
Koopcho.
Koopcho, okay. Property owners Lloyd and Deborah Rabine. Property location is 9257 168th Avenue Northeast, Columbus, Minnesota. Signed Elizabeth Merco, zoning administrator. And the second notice is City of Columbus, public hearing notice conditional use permit, CUP, for a planned unit development, PUD. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the City of Columbus Planning Commission on Wednesday, August 7, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as parties may be heard in the City Hall located at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus, Minnesota, to consider a request for a conditional use permit for a rural residential district planned unit development for preliminary plat Rabine Estates. The hearing shall continue until all evidence and testimony has been received. Applicant Woodset Smith Milting, Sean, I already forgot, Koopcho? Sorry. Property owners Lloyd and Deborah Rabine. Property location 9257 168th Avenue Northeast, Columbus, Minnesota. Legal description as listed. Signed Elizabeth Merco.
Thank you, Rochelle. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant or their representatives to please come forward and if you could state your name and address for the record. That's you, Lloyd, and I'm not going to say that last name. No Lloyd Rabine. I've got to ask you for your name again, Lloyd.
Lloyd Rabine.
And your address?
9257 168th Avenue, Columbus.
Thank you. Can you move the mic up a little closer to you? And you, sir, could you state your name and your address?
My name's Sean Koopcho. I'm a land surveyor with Woodset Smith Milting in Forest Lake, Minnesota.
Okay, thank you both. If you could just give us, I know Lloyd, you've been here in February and whatever, and we kind of know what's going on, but for the record, if you could just give us a little background on what you are asking.
I can present the narrative here.
That'd be fine.
Lloyd Rabine owns a property at 9257 168th Avenue Northeast consisting of 15.27 acres along Kettle River Boulevard. He would like to subdivide his property into three platted lots. Two newly created lots are proposed to front along Kettle River Boulevard, and the proposed third lot has the existing residence and would like to keep its access to 168th Avenue Northeast on the south there. Proposed Lot One contains 3.48 acres and has a proposed lot width of 200 feet in the back there, a little longer along the road. Proposed Lot Two contains 3.76 acres and also has a proposed lot width of 200 feet in the back. Proposed Lot Three contains 7.45 acres and has a 66-foot wide easement for access to 168th Avenue Northeast. Lloyd is proposing to dedicate 0.58 acres of right-of-way to Anoka County, per county stated highway number 62, and that'll be 60 feet, and that was confirmed by Anoka County Highway, what they wanted to take.
Okay, thank you.
Lloyd would like to request the city to grant approval for a conditional use permit for the rural residential district PUD development standards of lot averaging for the two proposed lots that are under five acres. And also would like to request the city to grant approval of a conditional use permit for a dimensional variation of the minimum lot width of 220 feet under the flexible dimension standards.
Okay. Did it go from 220 to 200? Is that, that's what you're going to?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Well, the only question I have, and I got a little confused, are you going to have one driveway there that's going to split off to the two properties, or is it going to be two driveways? What did Anoka County approve?
With the letter, Anoka County will allow access points for Lot One and Lot Two within 30 feet of the common lot line between Lots One and Two, so that east-west line in the middle will allow access on 30 feet on the north and 30 feet on the south for the access points. It doesn't say it has to be one approach.
Oh.
It did say.
I think they said two, yeah.
It says it has to have culverts with six-to-one safety grates and aprons are required.
So what the county does is the county likes to see driveways either use a common access point when there's two driveways because they don't want multiple access points along a road that is at 50 or 55 miles per hour. So when you do have new lots come onboard, they understand that people don't want to share driveways because that sometimes creates complications. And so what they say is that because they know that driveways are approximately 16 feet wide with an apron and such with culverts, that they'd like to see the driveways within 30 feet of the common lot line. And for the most part, we've seen that before, and in this particular case, if you look on your preliminary plat, you'll see the driveways are on the extremes of the lot. They're kind of on the outside lot areas here. And I've talked with the surveyor, Sean, and he said that he will revise the plat to reflect what the county is requesting. And I've talked to Lloyd, and he understands that he does have to apply to Anoka County to get a permit in order to create the driveways, and whoever buys the property will then will follow through, but understanding that we're not the jurisdiction that permits it, they just create the guidelines, and the plat then shows the guidelines, and then the building official, when he issues the permit, knows where the driveway should be.
Thank you. I have no other questions. Jody, do you have anything?
Did you go over all the findings of facts and recommendations on both the preliminary plat and the PUD, and everything looks okay?
I believe so.
Okay, just checking to make sure.
I guess that's a yes.
That's a yes.
Okay, good.
Anything else, Jody?
I don't have anything else, no.
Chris, do you have any question?
No, I don't.
Barb?
Yeah?
No.
Well, we'll move along here then. We're going to open up the hearing to a public hearing. If you guys could have a chair up front, it's protocol that we can call you back later if we have questions. We're going to open up to the public hearing here. You can just stay close by, appreciate it. We're going to open up the public hearing to everyone and anyone who has an interest in this matter can step forward and present testimony as evidence in support of their position. We ask when you come up that you give your name and your address. Is there anybody in the crowd that'd like to step forward and give a comment or a statement about this request? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll have it, pardon?
With the right to reopen.
Yeah, with the right to reopen. And now, we'll have a discussion up here. The Planning Commission will have a discussion about it. Anybody have any concerns or?
I just have a question for Elizabeth, if I could. On the driveway, from what I'm reading in the paperwork, that Anoka County doesn't seem to have a problem, but once he applies for the permit, is there any concerns that they will deny?
None.
None, okay.
Chris?
No, I kind of read through, and to me, it's harmonious in the area. It's kind of consistent with the other areas. The lot averaging, I feel, is right on, so I don't have a problem with it.
Jody, do you have any questions or?
No, just a comment that our engineer, Dennis Posler, had written a letter also from TKDA and just reiterating the points that were stated with Anoka County and with some of the findings of facts, and we should accept that letter also.
Okay, Barb?
No, I have no questions.
Mr. Chair, one more.
Yes.
I had a neighbor indicate to me that Mr. Rabine's driveway is partially on their problem, or on their property. I think it's the house, I'm not sure the address of theirs, and I just, I didn't know what to answer her.
Okay.
It is the one that touches their driveway on the farthest part of the property, and I didn't know what to tell her on that.
Heather Hawkinson?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, right there. But that shouldn't have any bearing on the PUD or on the final plat, should it?
So, just for perspective, so there's the cul-de-sac here at the end of the road for 168th. Then there's a driveway going to the Rabine House here, and so they're saying that this driveway is not within the 66 feet?
Just, like I said, she just indicated that that was my concern because that was on the property, and I don't think she under, I think she thought maybe the driveways were going to be up on Kettle River, but I don't know. The question was asked, and I said I would pass it along.
Is she referring to that quitclaim deed?
I don't know. I just, she said, how's that going to work when part of that driveway is on my property? And I said, I don't know, but I will ask.
So, yeah.
You can answer to that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Right. Just want to make sure it's recorded properly right at the beginning. You don't want to have to unravel the plat later.
So, to Sean's point, the cul-de-sac was acquired when we did a minor, when at the time we could do minor subdivisions, and at the time, we also took a 66-foot roadway easement. When you do minor subdivisions, you get easements through a document versus a plat, and so this is outside the plat, so it's by document, and my understanding is everything is updated through the county with the easement documentation to show the cul-de-sac on the right-of-way.
So we're good? The paperwork will be correct?
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you for your clarification.
That's all I have.
Yeah? Anybody have any other discussion? Anybody like to make a motion?
Give it a shot.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend for approval and forward to the City Council, the Rabine Estates preliminary plat located at 9257 168th Avenue Northeast in Columbus
9257-168th Northeast.
That's what I thought you said.
Yep. I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Yeah.
And I would second that motion.
We got a second. All those who approve, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose. Hearing no opposed, the motion's approved and will be sent to the city council for our recommendation.
Mr. Planning Commission Chair, there's one other motion. That was for the plat. You also need to approve the conditional use permit for the plan unit development subject to the deviations that Sean outlined in his presentation.
Anybody want to make a motion on that one?
It's basically her motion except for we change it to.
Can we add the same motion on to the first one?
Sure, do it again, Barb.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then this time you just do it for the PUD.
Make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to recommend for approval and forward to the city council, the PUD for a CUP based on the findings of fact by the interim city planner and recommendations 1 through 9. What was his name again?
The what?
Didn't he have some condition?
The engineer has comments to add to the findings.
One through nine, right. Okay.
Yes.
That's what I said, prove the PUD for the CUP amendment.
That cover it, Elizabeth?
It does.
It does, okay. Should we take another vote on this?
Yes.
Got a second?
I second.
Okay, we got Chris to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Well, it's approved. So that ends that. Mr. Raybine, go on.
Now it's up before the city council.
Right. Well, before the city council. All right, we're going on to item number 10 on the agenda. Public hearing discussion for the amendment to the city code chapter 7B sign regulations, section 7B-310, I-35 corridor, large off premise signs, pages 22 to 27. Before we start this, open it up to the public, should we give a little history about? Oh, I'm sorry. Forgot it again. Can you read the public notice, Rochelle?
City of Columbus, notice of public hearing ordinance amendment. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the City of Columbus Planning Commission Wednesday, August 7, 2019, at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter, as parties may be heard in the city hall located at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus, Minnesota, to consider a requi, consider an amendment to chapter 7B sign regulations, section 7B-310, I-35 corridor, large off-premise signs. A copy of the proposed changes can be requested at the city offices or viewed on the city website. The hearing shall continue until all evidence and testimony has been received. Signed, Elizabeth Mursco.
Thank you, Rochelle. Now I can go to you, right, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Could you just give us a little history about how we started this process and why we started this process?
Yes. So for those of you who have been following our billboard discussion, and those of you who are not, we'll just give you a brief overview of where we started. So last year, I brought to the attention to the city council that we were coming to the end of a twenty-year term for a majority of the billboards that were in the freeway district. And when I first came to Columbus in 2000, they had just finished looking at the billboard ordinance. And most of those billboards were constructed and then so it was at the tail end. And so I knew that they were very, the permits were very close together in term and wanted to know if the council wanted to make any changes and updates because if they did, we wanted to be proactive and get in front of all of those applications. Because at the time when I was here in, heard, I should say, of the time in 1998, 99, there were, there was a moratorium at that time also, and they studied it and some things had happened then. So again, wanting to be proactive, we thought we would get ahead of it and have a period of time where we could study it. So the previous council did put a moratorium on. And this past May, we had an opportunity, when I say we, the city, the planning commission and council had a little bit of time in order to look at this. And so we started to look at different ordinances and had discussion. And our very first discussion was in May. And when we talked about it, there were several questions that we wanted to ask the billboard companies. We reached out to them. We had a list of questions. We got some feedback. And since then, there have been meetings where we've had discussion back and forth with the council. And so I think the format was we wanted to take in as much information as we could in order to draft the ordinance. We have a draft ordinance now and we have a public hearing tonight. And I think everyone here is, wants to hear from the, we had several letters after three o'clock. So certainly we want to hear from all of you. And it really is a time for us to take information out from everyone that is here. So we welcome the testimony. But also want to let everybody know that this is, we're not in a hurry. So if we have to take a little extra time to talk through some issues, we're certainly are willing to do that. I know the planning commission has spent a couple of hours on this subject. So I think it will be a good dialogue because this will be the first opportunity for them to hear from all of you. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to the chair and anyone else who wants to speak during the public hearing.
Okay, we're going to open it up to the public. Hearing to everyone and anyone who has an interest in this matter can step forward and present testimony as evidence in support of their position. And we'd like everybody to state their name and address and talk clearly into the microphone. But if you have a statement or something you'd like to say about this, please come forward.
Hello. Hi. Okay. Is that a good volume? Okay, all right. My name is Michael Heilenson. I am the president of Schubert and Hoy Outdoor Advertising. I am here about the billboard ordinance. We have a sign along I-35. But first, I'd like to give you just a little background about us and our company. My grandfather started Schubert Outdoor Advertising in 1946. And my mom started Hoy Outdoor Advertising in 1991. I'm the third generation to run the company. About eighty percent of our business is in, here in central Minnesota. We're a small, local, family business. And our customers are local Minnesota companies. Due to the nature, we're in greater Minnesota and our client base are not national brands, but small, local companies. So the sign that we have on I-35 is a single pole steel structure that we built in 2006. The sign is very important for us. In the course of doing business, we pay thousands of dollars in property taxes every year. Since 2015, over $3,500 was paid to the city and over $2,500 was paid to the school district. So here is the issue with the proposal. The proposed changes make it so that the existing signs must meet the new requirements when the interim use permit would expire and you'd go to apply for a new one. In our case, the changes have been, the criteria for getting a new interim use permit has changed so much, we would not be, the interim use permit would not be approved for us. There's another problem with the way the code is written is that, this is a technical legal problem, but the city would be taking our, the rights we have to operate as a business in Columbus away from us without just compensation. And that is illegal under the Minnesota constitution. I just want to stay in business. The, if the city would like to stop having new signs put up, that is okay. I request that the planning commission make changes to the proposal so that existing signs would be allowed, so that we could keep our sign and continue. I would be happy to meet with the planning commission to talk about what that could mean. There's a lot of different ways the ordinance could be changed. If you have any questions now, I'd be happy to answer any.
Well, thank you. How many signs do you have in the city?
We have two signs. We have one on I-35 and one on Lake Drive.
Well, this one has to deal.
There's a sign that's 1952 vintage.
Yeah, that's the one on Lake Drive. We're not talking about this ordinance.
Right, right.
So it's only the one on, in the district, freeway district?
That's right, yes.
So. And that was put up in when, 2006?
Well, technically, the interim use permit was approved in December, I think, of 2005. And, but as part of the agreement to put up, as part of the approval process, we agreed to take down an old sign and that had like five poles to hold it up and build a modern new sign. And so, and that was built in early 2006.
So just for a clarification, there was one item that was brought to our attention and it appears that there was a missing word in the ordinance. So just for everyone else there for other issues. So there was a discussion about setback. And the, today's code says it's a five-foot setback versus a 20-foot setback. And the code should have said any new billboards erected would have to have the 20-foot setback, but all existing billboards would only remain with a five-foot. And we realized, because we did have quite a lot of discussion about easements. And we knew that there was going to be an issue if we looked at setbacks and changed setbacks, that then people would have to renegotiate easements. And that would be along legal, you know, issues and such and a lot, it costs a lot of money. And so in the code, that one nuance, that one little word is not in there, but that was the intention.
Okay.
That the setback would only apply to new billboards.
Okay. Oh, that's interesting.
So if that was one of your issues.
Get a copy of what, of what that, the corrected one?
Well, I think that, you know, when we have the discussion, those things are, that's what we'll put in into. Because once we take the public hearing testimony, the planning commission will come up with any changes they feel that is important or things that weren't included. Because I think there are planning commission members have identified two or three things that they talked about that they wanted to add. And so I think you'll see there'll be tweaks along the way to that ordinance. And that one, I do know, was one that was, came up in a couple of letters about the setbacks. So I just wanted to clarify that it is, it was the intent to, that it, always the intent that it was new billboards that would have to meet the setbacks.
Okay. And is that the same for, so that, the setback, that's on page two, part A. But then one other thing that would affect us or our sign is in section F, in the first paragraph, well, not paragraph number one, but the introduction paragraph of the interim use permit, right here, number four, establishment of a non-residential use on the property. And there was an existing business, I mean, there's been a business, I don't know when that business is there, but like if we're gonna go by the black and white, you know, that would be a reason for the city to say that, no, we couldn't renew our permit.
And I will say, that particular paragraph was brought up by city council. And so that's open for discussion. And taking in your testimony, I think they'll take that into consideration.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair of Planning Commission. My name is Matthew Wyland. I'm with Clear Channel Outdoor. We have a large number of signs in town. We have approximately 27 signs. Majority of those are on properties that we lease. We lease land from landowners. We do own some land in town as well. First off, I thank you, Elizabeth, for saying you guys are open to some dialogue.
Can I stop you? Did you get his name and address?
We got it.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Excuse me.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you for mentioning this public hearing is an opportunity for dialogue. We really do appreciate that. And thank you for the clarification on the setback. That was one of our main concerns. I think Mike did a good job of summarizing our concerns. We've got a large number of signs in town. Under interim use permits, you know, they were built or they were approved at the time under the conditions that were there at the time. Majority of our signs, you know, don't meet that new setback. So that is a huge relief for us if that's something that's coming off. But we have the same concerns that Mike does is with existing signs, as long as the new regulations would, would be for new signs, and there is a way for existing interim use permits to be renewed under existing conditions is what we're asking for the planning commission and council to consider. We also have a number of signs where we have existing businesses there. They've been there a long time. And that's, this is state they exist in. So we'd like just the opportunity to continue with the, at least have the opportunity to apply for renewal when our permits come up next year, to be renewed under the existing conditions that they are, if the business is there, that's taken into consideration. So that's the, that would be our, our request. Otherwise, that becomes a huge, you know, impact to those landowners as well, is they're going to lose out on that income as well.
Just one clarification, Matt. The clarification that I made was for the setback and we were in that particular paragraph, we would add new. I think the planning commission members have looked at the ordinance and I think there's going to be a couple of different tweaks to it as far as placement goes and separation because of the introduction of dynamic billboards. That's something that 20 years ago, we didn't have and kind of was introduced. And there was a tweak to the ordinance. And as we see dynamic billboards come into play more and more in the community, we realize there are a couple of tweaks that need to be done to the ordinance. And it had to do with lighting. And then there's some protrusions and extensions and things that, you know, they really didn't contemplate early on. And so when you look at the ordinance, I think they really took the time to look at things that were happening today that really weren't happening 20 years ago. So I think most of the things that you'll see are, because technology has changed and they got a lot of education along the way about that technology. We, I think we all got a lesson in NITS and all of those things. And I think we, if we have a dialogue, that we'd get just as much education from all of you in the newest technologies and wanted our code to reflect that.
I appreciate that. And I do applaud you guys looking forward and to the technology that's changing. That is where our industry is going. We don't have a dynamic sign in Columbus. We're very interested in putting one here. Along those lines, some of the other things in my notes to consider is, I know you're talking about moving your interim use permits from 20 years to 10 years is one of them. As someone's looking to do a dynamic sign, there's a huge investment in those. We look for 20 years from our landlords to be able to do that. So that's something we'd ask you to consider, at least for, you know, I know you don't want to complicate things, but at least interim use permits for digital signs that you would look at at least 20 years because the investment to put into them. But I certainly applaud you guys in looking at cities around you and being proactive and being ready for the future.
I'll also just add, one of the things that did not get into the ordinance, but we did discuss it at length, is, you know, during this 20-year period of time, Columbus went from a township to a city. And identity is a very big issue. We want people to know they're in Columbus. And when they drive into Columbus, we want them to appreciate that we have an exit and all of those things. And they did talk for quite a period of time about putting the city of Columbus, you know what I mean, you know, on the billboards like you have done in other communities, whether it's Blaine and others. We've, believe me, we all pass billboards now when we take measure as to what's in each billboard. And also looking at, you know, upgrading them, meaning that we've seen other communities where you've upgraded your bases and you've put, whether it's masonry or, I really actually don't know what it's made out of. But I know that you've enhanced them, at least on Clear Channels. I don't know about others. But again, they talked about, because they also looked at everyone else's. And so it didn't, while it didn't get into the draft, it was discussed. And I believe, and upon further discussion, you're going to see an add as to those features.
Certainly. And I think that's fair for, especially, we want to, the investment in digital is a big investment for us. That's why we also want to invest in the structures. And And we love partnering with cities. The cities we're in, we provide them advertising on our signs. I mean, I think even now, we provide the city some advertising, or when we can, on our static signs. But any city we're in with our digital signs, we provide messaging on the signs for community events and so forth. Certainly, we look at as a real partnership. We need each other.
I think that's what we, you know, Matt and Mike and everybody out there, we weren't here to put people out of business.
Thank you.
We were here to improve and tighten up ordinances, and to make our community look as good as others. And testimony helps us a long way. We had nobody in here talking to us. So, that's where we stand, and appreciate everybody that comes up forth and brings more information.
Thank you, and more than happy to answer questions, provide more information. I've talked a little bit with Ben. We haven't even formally met, but I appreciate Ben's time that he's given me, and, and we're certainly more than willing to communicate. And we've offered some different language, but as long as the intent is there, I know you guys can figure out the best way to do it. And we're here to certainly help, help draft or dialogue as, as necessary. We appreciate the opportunity.
Okay.
Just for our education, can you give us some idea of what it does cost to, to build a billboard and put it in this?
A dynamic sign?
No, just the, the regular, see, we had no, no idea of what the cost was.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's a lot of things that go into it. I mean, soil conditions and heights and sizes, but typically, you know, you're looking at six figures to, to put in a billboard just for the structure. You know, these things are, I always say they're easy, because I'm not the ones billing them. They're like a big erector set. But these things are individually engineered, and, you know, they're designed to last through hurricanes. There's a lot of thought that goes into these things. And 20-foot, 20, 30-foot walls for the footings, and they're meant to stay up and last. So, and when you add digital to them, just the digital, it's a 672 squi, 700, 672 square foot video screen, if it's a 14 by 48, that's a very large video display, which are also very expensive, that now you're adding to that structure. And then, when you're adding the rock and other stuff, it's, it's a good investment. But it's, you know, advertisers certainly allow the flexibility where it's in. It's, we, we love it from the standpoint, I mean, we're in the business of making money, we're a for-profit company, but it also does allow us further our mission with community involvement and involvement with law enforcement and emergency management. You know, we get awards every year for helping the FBI on Amber Alerts. We're a really quick way for, to put up Amber Alerts for kids that are missing, because they're usually in a car, and people are in the cars, and we put those ads up right away, those, and same with Futures Most Wanted, or emergency weather problems, or all those things. You guys, I don't need to sell you on that. You're already willing to do digital in your city. It is something I applaud that on, and it is, we do want to invest and, come back and invest in the city as well. We've just done stuff down the road in Van Nuys Heights. I just did one over in New Brighton, so we're creeping, creeping up here. We're over in Blaine, and creeping up to this area.
Well, thank you for the information.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Anybody else that'd like to step forward? Well, we come to a crossroads here. The crossroads is this, do we end this public hearing, or do we carry on for a couple of weeks, and what information we can get then from the public, or again, or?
So at this point, there's two options. One is you continue the hearing. If you feel that, what you heard tonight from the billboard companies, that perhaps they would submit some more information in addition to what they've already submitted. You can close the hearing with the right to reopen, if you think that there's significant more information, and you can do that at any time. And then, if you close with the right to reopen, you can start your discussion tonight. You can kind of think about what you've heard. I know you received letters today, three different letters, kind of late in the day, and if you want to take time to read that. It's really, it's really what your comfort level is. I can't really speak to all the legal issues that were brought up tonight. I'd have to ask Bill as to what he felt, or how to address those. So, those are your, your two options.
Well, we can't, we'd have to close it to discuss it. So, whose decision is that, and to continue it?
Really yours.
Well, looking at everybody here, I, I think we should continue it and come back in two weeks at our next planning commission?
If you continue, certain.
Okay.
Second up for you?
Barb's second in it. All those in favor, say aye. We'll go on to item number 11, which is the public open forum. About, here we have a gentleman. State your name and your address, sir. Appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Mark Malazi, and 9243 168th. And I basically just wanted to ask about any possibility for there to be walking paths added, especially along Kettle River in that area. I, my wife, we have two kids, and numerous times, we have, we like to walk and get out and exercise, and I know there's more people that are younger of age, and obviously, Columbus is expanding, and obviously, with what you're talking about, as far as getting the Columbus name out there and people moving here. You know, one thing that, obviously, I think would help with that is walking paths. And for me, it's more about a security concern than anything else. Couple of months ago, my, I was walking with my two daughters down Kettle River, and where the two new proposed lots are actually, just coming around the corner. We were walking back, and a car was coming down the road.
Yeah, but we're council members here tonight, in the audience. You can maybe stop and talk with one of them, but I, I know where you're coming from. It's always dollars, you know.
Well, and those shoulders are so wide. You know, I've expressed them myself, too, walking. I walk a lot. And I mean, I'm almost on the grass, and people are, if you live along Kettle River, you cannot access any other neighborhood or the park without a trip on Kettle River. And we know it's a county road, but I can't even tell you in the five months that I've been hitting the pavement, that it's scary.
Yeah, I've tried to train my daughters to hit the ditch if we have to. And, and we do bike to the park, and that's another good one, is, you know, just trying to get down to the park area, because obviously, we like to go down there, and they like to play in the playground. But it does sometimes make us think twice before we do that, just because there is no clear path to get down there without going down the road with the bus.
Well, we're going to be electing a new county commission for our district pretty soon here, so maybe you ought to talk to them, too. They're the ones that probably fund it. I don't, I mean, I have, talking off my head right now, but-
Oh, we start squawking local, you know, and-
Right.
I know my wife has contacted Anoka County a couple of times as well, but has only been able to leave messages and not get ahold of anybody, but, but yeah, so I just guess wanted to bring that up.
We can hear one going by now.
Could I ask Elizabeth a question? Whose jurisdiction is that on a county road for paths? Is that county, or is that city?
It is the county, and I'm not sure whether she's still in the wrong office, but the person that you need to talk to, her name is Karen Blaska, and she is the park planner for Anoka County. So she does all the planning for that stuff. So, she would be a great one to start out with.
I would suggest, too, getting as many neighbors, people involved. More numbers, more power.
I will also say that the more, the more people that you have on board for a particular project, the better it is. It also, I think the county, when they're planning, I think they look at it, and as long as there's people who all want to pull together for a project, they are more encouraged to go down that path. So, anytime you look at sidewalks or paths, you always want willing sellers or people that are willing to donate their land for, for paths, because quite frankly, the roads are not big enough, the road ditches aren't big enough, paths go on the other side of the ditches. And so, when we did a, when we, and you, if you've driven through Columbus, you know, they're doing the project on Broadway, and so you know that they're widening the shoulders, just for that purpose, for safety purposes. But a couple of years prior to that, when they were putting in right turn lanes, they would only work with people who are willing to work with them voluntarily. They were not willing to go down the road of condemning people's land in order to put the right turn lanes in. So, it's always great to have people all on board, because those projects go much smoother, and they're willing to fund them at that point.
Good information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the info.
Our comment? Hearing none, we'll close the open forum. And this, quote, item number 12, city administrators' report.
I just published two more hearing notices for this week, so we will have two more hearings at the next meeting. And today, we accepted the apartment application, so we're similar, moving right along into, to fall with applications.
Great.
And I think Ben might get something together for, maybe we'll talk about fencing, or lighting, or something in the mixed-use district.
Oh, yay.
Good.
Question back on the billboard. Are we going to come up with some of the missing items with a new document, or are we just going to kind of hold off and wait till we have the next hearing?
So Ben has put together a list of, of notes. For those who have talked to Ben, we were going to get those notes to Jake and have him start updates. So we'll have draft two, and make sure we'll circulate it.
There's a lot of omissions in there, too. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Planning commissioners' report, I have none, but let's go around the table. Jody, do you have anything?
I do not.
Barb?
No.
Chris?
No.
No?
Nothing to report.
Okay. And then we've got a reminder, and item number 14, that Chris King's going to attend the city council meeting on August 14. And anybody want to make a motion? I can't believe this. It's almost 8 o'clock. Anybody want to make a motion, do a adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So here, we're closed.